Good evening, welcome to the school board meeting. It's Monday, September 14th, 2020, 6:00. We're in the Susan Tully Leslie Boardroom at the 1887 building. Let's call the meeting to order and ask Mr.
Mrs. Fisher.
Here.
Mr. Gayhart.
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Here.
Mr. Martel.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Scarrow.
Here.
Ms. Krokowski.
Here.
We do have a quorum. We will continue. I will note that this meeting has been noticed per state statutes. I'm thinking we don't have any community participation unless you have something to read in.
I don't have anything to read on that.
I'll just read that and go to approval of our minutes. Passed out closed session of those of you who are here, regular attached to your agenda as always. Any questions? What is doing separately? Give a motion for a regular.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the August 24th, 2020 regular session. School board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
No, second.
So moving to second to approve the minutes of the August 24th, 2020 regular session. School board meeting as presented.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
And Ms. Krokowski, before I ask you, this is something I forgot to cover in our orientation meeting, but in approval of items, if you weren't present, typically people will abstain. That's another option as opposed to voting yes or no. And/or if there's a conflict of interest where you would receive a financial gain, so such as like a contract that would involve your mom because she's your provider. So otherwise, everything else, you're good to vote on. But I'll still just call your name. You can vote yes, no, or abstain. Ms. Krokowski.
Yes.
Motion carried. Do our closed session now. Is there a motion for that?
I'll move to approve minutes of the August 24th, 2020 closed session. School board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moving to second to approve the minutes of the August 24th, 2020 closed session. School board meeting as presented.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart.
Yeah.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Abstain.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
And Ms. Krokowski, just as a reminder, if you're not at the meeting, you should abstain. But Ms. Krokowski.
Abstain.
Motion carried. General and other fund bills, Mr. Truon.
The general and other fund bills this evening coverage checks number 140652 through 140796. Wire transfers 193 to 209. ACH checks number 022 through 033. And option renovation wire transfers 190 on 191 in the combined amount of $1,375,090.56. And there should be a memo providing some additional information on the bill listing. And it is a rather large amount because it's been three weeks since I was in the meeting.
Questions, word of motion.
I just had one question on the CISA, the two CISA payments to what for Wise Dash program and PALS data software system. Could you explain what those are?
Wise Dash is used for a lot of student analysis of data. And I think we did some customization with that for the high school. And Mr. Tyler could probably answer that a little bit.
Yeah, it's equivalent to Edge Climber. Which is just, it's a software that houses all our data.
Oh, okay.
So state and local data we could input connects with our Skyward system. And then, then it can be disaggregated easily looking at overarching data. We did have some personalization to make sure that some of our assessments that we contract out with and our practice ACT. So we contracted out to make sure that data could be entered and then the teachers could then go through it and analyze that.
Got it.
I think part of the cost is an ongoing, a part of it was.
Part of it's an ongoing and one was a standalone, just.
Personalization.
Yes, very good. Thank you.
And then the PALS, is that the same thing for the lower grades or?
For lower grade, okay.
No, it's not the same thing. Yeah.
We have to do for kindergarten.
Okay.
And do we just.
K through two, grades K through two.
Okay.
And we get reimbursed for that also. So it comes out now and then we'll get reimbursed at the end of the year for it.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Yep.
That was all I had.
Other questions? Are you none? We give a motion.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of September 14th, 2020. Check numbers 140652 to 140796. Wire transfer, wire numbers 193 to 209. ACH check numbers 022 to 033. And options renovation wire numbers 190 to 191 in the combined amount of $1,375,090.56 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
This will move to second to approve the general and other fund bills of September 14th, 2020. Checks numbered 140652 to 140796. Wire numbers 193 to 209. ACH check number 022 to 033. And options renovation wire numbers 190 to 191. In the combined amount of $1,375,090.56 as presented. For a couple.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yeah.
Mr. Gayhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Krokowski.
Yes.
Motion carried. Reporting discussion item, student report.
Ms. Krokowski, you're up.
All right, perfect. So first I will begin by introducing myself. So hi everyone. My name's Anastasia Krokowski. I'm currently a senior at Elkhorn. You can call me Annie, by the way. And I'm currently serving as the student council president. So some updates on the high school. With homecoming, we're looking to make a few changes so we can obviously follow social distancing guidelines. We're looking to still have dodgeball, powder puff, and then we're going to try to livestream our assembly. And with the dance, we're looking to maybe hold it as an only senior dance. But we're still in the early stages of that planning, so I will report back on that. Tonight is advanced placement parents night, and that started at 6:00 PM. So that's just for any parents and students who are interested in the AP courses offered at the high school. On September 23rd, the Walworth County job fair will be taking place. And then our CTSO clubs such as FFA, DECA, HOSA, and FCC LA have begun having their beginning of the year meetings. On the middle school, some sixth graders tested the durability of helmets during their helmet crash test lab. I remember doing that when I was in sixth grade, so that was fun to see. And then they're also starting to hold their FFA meetings. At Tivit, they began teaching the kids how to do the new social distancing procedures. They celebrated Patriots' Day by wearing red, white, and blue clothing. And then they had their virtual PTA meeting on Thursday. At Jackson, they also celebrated Patriots' Day, and they did this by writing thank you letters to first responders. And then they actually have their virtual PTA meeting tonight. And then Westside also celebrated Patriots' Day by wearing red, white, and blue. And then over at the Athens program, they have 179 new students on a program called Agenuity. And that just started last week. They have started their blended learning days in their temporary building. And some of the curriculum is currently on backorder, but they're working to get it to the families as soon as possible. Yeah, that is what I have for you guys tonight.
Thank you, and welcome to get the honor of serving in another interesting year.
I know to add to what Annie shared regarding homecoming. We are also, you know, looking that we feel like we can still do the parade. We're going to call up the city though, make sure they're okay with that. And it may look a little bit different where, you know, we're not going to throw thirty kids in the back of a dump truck. We'll have a certain number of them on the boat and then others can walk into the parade. But we feel like these once in a lifetime type opportunities, we really want to do our best to still hold those. I have to say, we're very, both, you know, Mr. Kill, myself, Mr. Cleveland, we're very nervous about even doing a dance. So we've asked Annie to talk to the students and see, are we okay, you know, potentially not running that? Because one of our concerns is even if we do seniors only and we allow them to bring one date, that's potentially 500 kids. Homecoming is a very popular dance. What's different from prom is prom traditionally at most had 150 to 200 kids. So we knew that that was a lot easier for us to trace or to track. But when you're talking even one grade level potentially being up to 500 including their dates. Kind of problematic. So Annie's going to talk to the student council, get their feedback. And our concern is how do we contact trace who was close if there was an exposure there? So then maybe wanting to be frank that we're not all gung ho and we could potentially, more than likely, would be the only school in the area that ever stayed does homecoming dance, that we do it. We were the only school in my knowledge that did prom. Not going to let that seem to go well. But what made us feel really comfortable is everybody left the dance within fifteen minutes for the most part. And they're only, I don't know, Annie, you were there. How long did you stay at prom?
I was there for dinner and then we ended up going to the movies. So I didn't.
And then like, whoop, it was, we're never gonna go. It was about fifteen day hearts that stayed for the dance portion. So I think in all, actually, I think a lot of the kids probably aren't comfortable or don't want to potentially do that as well. So we'll see. We're still in that, you know, area. Is there any? I guess I'd be curious from the board, you guys are okay either way on how we go on that. The reason I bring that up, other districts, what I wouldn't want to do is us make a decision and you guys feel like, well, gee, yeah, we can't support that. You guys need to hold the dance and hold the parade. Or, you know, so I, I don't want to put you in a position where you feel like you need to come back as a school board and vote.
I've heard more interest in having the parade. The community than I have about the DIA. The thing that makes me nervous about the dance is that there's usually a lot of kids from other schools that are there. That could be a tragedy nightmare.
Yeah, and if we were to do it, what we put out there for Annie to take back is that we'd do it outside on like the football field. Like a sock hop that we've restricted to seniors and their date only and only from our school community.
Okay.
To narrow that a little bit.
Okay.
Even then, we're kind of like, you're asking, I feel like real.
And I think families can step up if, if, let's say they're getting the float or something and the parents aren't comfortable with it. The parents need to step up and say, this year my child can't do it. I mean, hopefully, the families will be vocal about what they want. So I think that's, you know, and I think our community's been doing it really well.
I think overall, part of my concern is when you're talking about these type big events and a kid's feeling a little bit under the weather with a certain type of symptom.
Yeah.
How likely are they to just be completely upfront and say, yep, I've got a headache and a little bit of tingling on my throat. I'm going to stay home. As opposed to, nah, it's probably something else. I'm going to go. So, all right, we'll keep you posted. Annie's going to have the conversation with student council and we'll circle back and let you know. Well, I really want the students to also own that decision and how they feel about it. We'll do our best to provide those opportunities that we don't want them to suffer as well. But I think a lot of kids will be happy because a rumor was running around that we had already canceled all homecoming activities. Couple of weeks ago, my kid was on that account. What are you talking about? I haven't talked about that. Yeah, so even having the parade and the other activities, it gives, you know, pretty. All right, thank you, Annie. It was a very good job on your first report.
Thank you.
Well, I was just wondering about like the school assembly for homecoming. How is that being held?
Yeah, so we planned on doing.
That's a lot of kids.
Streaming, yeah, we're not going to bring them all together. They're going to, we are going, the tenant plan, they have to work the details out on that is to have the activity, call the kids down. Who are, you know, okay, the, what's one of the activities, the tug of war?
Sure.
You know, call the kids down who are participating in the tug of war for the activity and it's livestream and the kids remain.
Perfect. All right. Thank you.
You're right, though. That's, you know, putting the thousand kids or nine hundred kids in the gym.
I couldn't imagine that was happening. I just, you know, wondering how it would be.
Yeah. All right. Let me go back to.
Next.
Yeah, each year we'd like to provide us an update on some of the summer projects that our maintenance or contractors have done. And it's really kind of two reports. The first one there, if you click on the maintenance, Jason, it'll just give you kind of a status report on this year's projects, which are in the blue. If you scroll down a little bit, you'll see. Funds there are so large, you probably can't really see a lot of the detail. But if you scroll over to the, to the right, you can see kind of the status of most of the projects. And just about everything was completed already. We tried to get most of those things done during the summer. So our roofing projects, our lighting projects, our renewing of the court systems, both at Jackson and at the middle school was all completed during the summer, a lot of paintings. So some of what we have to show you is some pictures of these because this one on my paper doesn't really tell the story on some of the projects. So anyway, so that's more of a reference. But if you go to the, kind of the picture component and just kind of scroll through that, that's five building. I think it starts at Jackson. I'll just kind of share with you what some of the pictures represent. And this one, I always like to take this one at the bottom of the stairs here at the 1887 building, just looking across the hall because that truffle floor always comes up really nice in terms of after the custodians get that garnished up. And that's just another picture. And you can kind of see the markings too with the six foot distances. You've seen that probably at the other schools if you had a chance. So that just kind of shows. And this is kind of what a typical classroom would have looked like last year.
Yep.
So one of the things we kind of struggled with this summer is looking at all the tables, different structure of tables, which were great for collaboration, but not so when you try to separate kids. So we did make the investment in student individual desks, both at the elementary, middle, and also some for the high school. So that's kind of like last year's what it'll look like for the room. If you click to the next page, you get kind of a sense of how those new student desks look. It's not the same room, but you get kind of the flavor of how that changed within the classroom. We also did some painting. So I think the fifth grade and another grade level had at least one wall painted purple at the same time. So just to kind of dress up some of the classroom.
No, it does look like we're going, you know, back to early 1900s style room as opposed to that collaborative. But with these desks post COVID, they can still push them together and culture. What I also like is that even during the regular flu season, we can pull them out and not, you know, you can have that.
I like the separate chairs as well, too. It's not all one unit.
And then we had our custodial staff. We had our maintenance staff. We had a number of volunteers that came in and helped assemble all of those chairs. And actually ended up getting, we did a thousand, the elementary school, 500 the middle school, and I think 180 the high school. And pretty much all that was done within a two or three day time period. So. So anyway, thank you for all the volunteers. This is the Jackson floor in the gym after it was refinished. So I wish I had a before picture because it was kind of yellowish before that. And it's been redone. The last time, I think, was in 2002. So it's likely that this could be the last time we could actually sand the floor down based on the thickness of the wood. So keep in mind, I guess, in the future, but it did turn out really nice. So I think there's one more picture of that.
Yeah, that's great.
And then Westside, we're looking at those pictures. Again, that was kind of what one of the classrooms would look like. But if you look up on the top, you'd see the lighting too, because that's the older lighting. So matching up because of the ceiling at Westside are very different than the other buildings. They had to experiment with a variety of different LED lightings to kind of get the right match. So in the next picture, you'll see kind of that new lighting and then also the desk classroom. And you'll see also a little lighting in the hallways. Of the classroom.
And the teachers love the lighting. They can zone it. You know, they have a dimmer up on the board now. A lot of positive fingerprints.
That's the library last year at Westside. And if you click it, see how they rearranged the furnitures.
And those desks are the desks that they already had. So that's those same desks that were, you know, they already had that new model.
Just rearranged them.
They just pull them off.
And Tivit, this would be looking down the hallway towards the main playground area of last year. And if you flip to the next page, you'll see the updates. Our custodians did all that painting.
Great house.
Really kind of dressed it up.
Yeah.
And that would have been a last year classroom than this year. And then that's the crew that was working on putting the desk together. Unfortunately, to the right, you can't see the individual, but our superintendent was there putting desks together one day as well. The chance of having tables together. Mr. Anselmo helped out at Westside too during the limitation. High school, I think we showed some pictures. This would have been the cafeteria last year with a lot of the booth seating and the number of chairs and then kind of the redo with the booths removed and then just four chairs to each of the tables. And then there's looks like at least one of the classrooms with the newer desks in there. That would have been lobby last year with the booth seating in the corner there. Like the next one shows. Regular tables. And then we also got some outdoor picnic tables for both Westside or both the high school and the middle school. And then we talked with the fair office, the fairgrounds office, and they're allowing us to borrow their portable picnic tables for the elementaries if they want them. So they were going with that. The roof that the pool looked like last year or before the project was done, you can see kind of all the ripples along there. And I think the next picture shows completion. I think there's just another picture of that. Not real exciting with projects, but.
Bill, I was going to ask on the roof, looking at that compared to the rest of the roofs on the district, is that adhered all the way throughout? Because typically we had gravel to hold it down.
Depends on the type of roof system, like a built up or a membering roof wall.
Okay.
That's the difference. They can see kind of the other type of roof in a lot of the areas at the high school and some of the other buildings.
Okay, so that one's adhered all the way across the spans? Because I know that's the reason they put gravel on is to keep the wind from catching and becoming a scale.
Right. They don't seem to put the gravel on any longer with the newer roofs.
Okay.
In their past. Because how they hear them, I guess, is the difference today.
Okay, that's what I was going in. If it's adhered completely then, so that you don't get that bubbling and then sailing and things.
What's the warranty on?
Uh, 20 years.
20 years now.
And then here's some of the doors. We kind of finished up the door updates. I think that was the west doors. And then that's the newer doors going in towards the kids' set area. And the middle school custodians, they'll hopefully date that. And then that's the gym, how it looked before it was refinished. And then that's what it looks like now.
Amazing how that burnish is hard to yellowize.
Yeah, really.
That, I mean, that gives you an idea of, that's pretty much what Jackson's looking like.
Correct?
Which it would have been about the same time.
Right. Just another picture. And then that was the crew putting the middle school tables together. So they had a supervisor there. I think that's Dave Braille's daughter, the supervisor. So.
I'd say you could get, what it's for the elementary desk, it was about six desks and hours. I don't know.
Maybe a few more.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, that was better than me. No, I, I didn't really keep track. It was, you know, it was, so when you're talking about a thousand, it was a lot of man hours to get the thousand, because you have little drawers and stuff. And, yeah, it was.
At the middle school, I had quite a crew. So they just kind of went from pod to pod. And that's, they had a little different type of desk, but that's what it looks like now at the middle school.
And it looks like those desks are able to.
Fit together.
Fit back together again for collaborative.
I think it's like if we took and did this idea song.
See, this, that would have been a good idea because you would need one more.
You'll see kind of the dispenser setup, the typical classroom, and then the temperature reader, which those are throughout the district.
And if you hear anything about the temperature readers, what we found is that the calibration, they weren't calibrated correctly when we put it up. We finally had a little one who did have a fever and that we checked and verified in the office and it wasn't picking up. So we went back through the settings and there was a calibration step that got messed. So those should all be fixed and updated there. So if you hear any, you know, they're all, I don't think those temperature scanners were good. I mean, out of the time from the calibration wasn't set up.
Okay. And then some of the signage they have, all the schools have different signage, but you can kind of see how they set up certain areas for different grade levels, either going upstairs or downstairs. Cafeteria area. I think that's the last picture.
Did we replace the curtain?
No.
What, that's the middle school?
Yeah.
Were we supposed to?
Well, I thought it was, I thought it was. Yellow this one.
Oh, the other side is dark.
Oh, we're coming.
If you're in the camp, if you're in the gym, it is.
Got it. Got it. Yeah, this is the camp cafeteria, the purple. Got it. I knew I.
We did add some more picnic tables outdoor over the college and career camp as well.
Do they get their new light in? On the building? No?
Yeah, yeah. But I know the request has been in for several months to be away and we visited, we visited there. And I know it was brought up again when Brian Albright came out to do his message to his staff from there. Because he wanted them to see that kids can be in the buildings and doing stuff and doing that. So, you know, it got brought up again, but yeah, we'll have to go through that on the sign there.
Bill, I wanted to ask a question too on the, looking at the Excel sheet for the expenditures coming up and whatnot. Just an idea, I saw that the locker room, lockers are rusting out again. I think that's an ongoing thing. As we look at that, are there some plastic or fiberglass or something that we could prevent that high humidity environment from always winning that battle?
Yeah, they do have other products available now. It certainly is something we should look at.
Should look into, I think, yeah.
The elementaries were the ones that probably had the worst because they had the kids coming in and out of recess. So I know they've looked at a little different. It has, oh, it's like an epoxy kind of bottom, so they don't rust out as much. But.
Yeah.
Which is still.
Yeah, I just looked at that and thought it's something we should probably investigate.
That makes sense.
The questions? First reading of revised professional staff and sports staff employee handbook.
And I don't have, I apologize. I don't have my cheat sheet here on the changes on the employee handbook. I got a lot of the language. I'll just have to. I got a lot of the language. I'll just have to go ahead and scroll through there. It's related to some of the updates, just like in our policies, our Title IX. Schedules, those were. So we have a lot of that. The new, again, is you've got it in front of you as well, but in the blue is the new language and so forth. And we do have to add the specific individuals. And after we, I believe we had a chance at the last meeting to talk about that too, because we got some initial updates from legal or guidance in relation to how we have to have it structured. Who we have to do, what type of roles based on our district specifically. I don't know how really small school districts can view and structure. Things with all the different layers that you have to have, but the blue is boilerplate language recommended by legal. And we do have to specify the specific individual and their contact information rather than the position. We did look at, and there was a good question that was brought up in relationship to the timeliness on, you know, how long for review and so forth. So we did have discretion on that. And in this one, it didn't impact, but we did add some language to delineate, you know, business days and so forth at those different levels. I believe that was pretty much most of the changes were already Title IX. There were some updates made. Or is the end on the stipends and those positions? And those are always a little fluid in relation to what that job is, what it entails and how much it is. So for example, Skills USA, back when it first started, it was a very small organization. Didn't have a lot of meetings and requirements. That program's grown. And now it has a lot, you know, it's up at the level where the recommendations.
I think 46 is the next page. Where's the change?
So this is an update to the salary schedule reflecting the 1.5 percent. Across the board, rounded to the cent. And we may, when we look at next year, we may look to try to make them. More rounded.
A whole dollar.
Yeah, yeah.
Forty seven thousand eight hundred six dollars and fifty cents. Yeah, whole dollar. That was, yeah, taken with the 1.5. Updated. Here, so this stipend we did consolidate a couple of them that, that advisory had been doing, but kind of melded them all into the Skills USA umbrella, which it's a really big umbrella, all the way from digital photography to, you know, construction. And it's, there's a lot of different avenues there, pathways. I think, yeah, so, yeah. For technical service organization. And you can see these are a number one that we consolidated to that Skills USA umbrella. And I think that was.
I think that was definitely.
Any other questions on the handbook? Some changes in the employee acknowledgement. I think it's pretty hard to verify that they actually reviewed it.
Right.
They received, and these are legal recommendations. And that was the first reading. If any questions come up. So go ahead and review those. If you have any questions for the next meeting, then we can review that. But again, the similar Title IX changes.
Let's see it again. Our condition to the district administrator personnel.
All right.
This was a spay one.
This is a domino one.
Yep.
There's quite a few dominos in this one, yes. And a lot of, a lot of growth at the end of the year in certain program areas and are shifting there. So we'll go through this. I appreciate the staff as, as we move through this. But starting off, Tricia Camillo-Leeva did resign. She took a position closer to home. She lived up in the Lockersheim area. She won't be returning this year. And I wish her well as she moves forward. Rebecca Perez resigned as a Jackson custodian. She won't be returning this year. Megan Rudolph will not join us this school year as an avid tutor. Jenna Gramley as a cheerleading assistant coach resigned, won't be coming back this coming school year. So now we go into the appointments and the positions. Amy Schneider was hired as a high school social studies teacher. She'll be replacing the social studies. Portion of John Handel's position with the exception of he's still teaching AP Economics class. And he'll mentor on one of the other sections. I believe he has two sections as he's doing the athletic director duties. Chandler Kaiser was a recent addition for our options program. They are up over 600 students. Is what they hit. So they ended the year last year around 200. They're up over six. So Chandler will be a teacher slash counselor. He'll have to get his emergency license for the counselor position, but he has his bachelor's degree. So it's a teacher slash counselor tutor within that program that provides additional support. Steven Relithan has been hired as a fifth grade teacher, replacing Rhonda Crum, whose, her transfer's coming up. Well, but she's going to be joining the options team there. Steven joins us from Salem and he is, he's from Elkhorn. I think he does some teaching here. So, you know, I really appreciate Salem being willing to work with us because he had already had a weekend at school. You know, he accepted the position to come over here and join us.
Nice to have another male in the elementary too.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no males in the grade right now.
Matthew Hall, joining us as a tech intern. He'll be entering the tech department for the 2020, 2021 school year. Interns, I'm sorry, that's a tech intern through our. Computer tech services, not our CTE tech intern. So we, Mr. Jerkin, why did I say Jerkin? He, he does a great job of securing the tech interns. They need to get hours. They do make some money, but it helps balance out our tech department as they bring them on board. Brenna Berry has been hired as a high school avid tutor. Gabriella Trujillo as a high school custodian. She'll be replacing Michaela Miller. Mariana Nelson as a teaching assistant at West Side. She'll be replacing Laura Webke. Catherine Price is a cookover at West Side. Catherine will be replacing Melissa. Kylie Cosby. Is joining us as a teaching assistant at Jackson. She'll be covering a leave of absence for the year from a staff member. Anna Benton is transferring from kindergarten at West Side over to the options program. To serve primarily, she was a kindergarten teacher. She'll be serving in the kindergarten area. And because of the enrollment numbers at West Side, her position won't be backfilled as we collapse from four to three sections. But the class sizes are still at like 21. They're still quite reasonable. And the teachers were very supportive and the team members were doing that, so I thank them for that. Diana Rickers, also from West Side, will be transferred, transferred over to options. Rhonda Crum, as I mentioned earlier, she'll be transferring from fifth grade at Tibbetts over to options. And then in order to backfill Diana Rickers' position, Christy Flood moved from the second grade position up to fifth grade at West Side. She's very excited and agreed to voluntarily or semi voluntarily. Agreed to transfer. When I talked to her about it, she was more than willing to go and do it and step up and do that. So we appreciated that. The teachers who transferred to options, all of them put in the requests to transfer. Nobody had to be involuntarily transferred. Carrie Brown, and I give her a lot of credit. She had volunteered to move from second grade down to first grade to handle what was perceived where the student counts would be. And she was also gracious enough, so she had prepped to get ready for first grade. And then she was gracious enough to agree to go back to second grade to Bill and Christy Flood's place so Christy could go back. So I want to really thank her for her willingness to do that. And one of the first grade sections will be collapsed at West Side as well. They're down to six feet, so they'll go to three sections on point. Emily Anzalone has, originally she transferred from early childhood to special education. Then on the next meeting, she did submit a resignation. We'll have that on the next board meeting immediately. Oh, we have a transfer of Katie Stocko. Well, she worked the A M's at Step Ahead 4K with the early childhood, special education students, and then transitioned back to West Side herself containing early childhood in the P M. Ashley Mu, transferred from her, we hired her as an English teacher to, in the summer, over at the middle school. When Tricia Leyva resigned, Ashley had really wanted to be an E L teacher, but we didn't have the opening. So she put in a request and wanted to transfer to the English language teacher position, so she'll be replacing Tricia Leyva. Carlin Hardy put in a request to fill Ashley Mu's English teacher position, so we're granting that. She'll be replacing Ashley Mu's English position. And then Danielle Schumer is transferring from a special education teaching assistant to the special education teacher, which she has either completed the license or is completing it this year. So she'll be certified serving that special education teaching position, replacing Carlin Hardy. And then we have Allison being transferred from Jackson to Tibbetts due to the student needs. That happens with special education teacher aides and or enrollment numbers. We have a transfer of Melissa Dodge from a cook to teaching assistant at West Side. Jennifer Dane as a special education teaching assistant will transfer from Jackson to West Side. I do soon. That's all the personnel issues I have for you tonight. I believe it's our largest change. I've never had, and I never had this sort of moment that late in the school year.
When I ran through this, I almost stopped. We need one of those.
Yeah, okay.
Screens showing where everybody's moving, they're moving this way, moving that way.
Have you slumped in the last month?
I, I have to say that the team really did a great job of navigating that. So it was really, I just had to review and say yes. I did go over to West Side when. We didn't have our volunteers necessarily all together that we needed for options. And I really, I didn't want to, I don't ever want to transfer someone to a position that they don't want to do because I think that lessens their chance for success.
Yep.
And so what I've also found is sometimes when you just meet one on one with people, or not sometimes, quite often, then you get to have that conversation. They'll really let you know what they're thinking, how they feel, what they want to do. So I give credit to the staff. When I went over and talked to an individual that I thought would be really good at moving up to the fifth grade level to allow Diana to come over, that individual, and I knew that she would be very comfortably direct with me and sharing that perspective. And, and she did. She ended up not being amongst that transfer. But really the staff came up with a lot of the ideas, at least in those transitions, as to who and where. And so what I like is that a lot of these transfers, again, they want to be in those positions. They're excited about the positions. And I think that's going to help them do a better job. We would never transfer someone to a position that we didn't feel would be good in that slot. And or sometimes it's not that they wouldn't be good in that slot. It may just not be in the best interest of the overall team to have them there. So, yeah, it, no, it's been a busy month.
Are they all teachers on record at upsets in the younger grades then?
These, these individuals were all teachers on record at the younger grades except for Chandler Kaiser. He'll be in the 612 level.
Okay.
We still, we're, we're hiring a math, what we call a math tutor to provide support. We, there just didn't feel, there wasn't a good fit for that position that we were completely certain.
So you're still needing to fill that position?
We, we fill like with the addition of Chandler in that supporting role. And then with the additional person who's going to be working part time as a math tutor, which came on board. But I think we'll have the math support, Bridget Truand, transferred from the Career and College Academy to handle the science.
Oh, okay.
And then we have Juliet there. So at the high school level, well, at options, they run on about a 50 to one ratio, pretty students to one teacher.
Right.
So it's quite a bit more efficient in regards to pupil, the students. But when you're looking at, you know, going from 200 to 600, it's quite a jump in.
Right.
Yeah. In retrospect, I, I don't know, I talked to Tricia about this. Had we known that we were going to have that amount of growth, that maybe we should have just slated the options start date for, you know, October 1 or the end of September. But in reality, when we talked about it, that and looked at it in the summer, her families want to get back too. They want the kids in school.
Right.
And so, you know, starting on the same date, there's going to be some growing pains and working through some things. And they're dealing with some quarantine of, you know, staff and so forth. But I think, you know, they'll get through it. And the team, they're, they've all been very positive and helpful to those issues. Any other questions on that?
I'm moved to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for September 14th, 2020, including new employment contracts, conditions on passing the background check, and district mandated drug screening as presented.
I'll second it.
The movement is seconded to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for September 14th, 2020, including new employment contracts, conditions on passing the background check, and district mandated drug screening.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Kerkowski?
Yes.
It's like you don't have any gifts. Notes unless you got some?
No, we have some that are coming in, but they're not in on this.
Second reading of revised policies.
Yeah, I did not have any further questions related to those policies from the last reading. Is there, is there anything that anyone wants to look at in particular?
You're in them. Let's look for the motion.
I am moved to approve the new policy Title IX sexual harassment, students and other applicable individuals entitled. Nine sexual harassment employees and revised policies. 112 non-discrimination policy, 112 rule discrimination complaint procedure. 112 exhibit complaint form, 411 equal educational opportunities, 411 rules. Student discrimination complaint procedures, 411.1 harassment, bullying, hazing. 411.1 rule harassment, bullying, hazing. 511 equal opportunity employment, 511 rule equal employee discrimination complaint procedure. 513 harassment in revised K 12 student management book and present.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve new policies Title IX sexual harassment. Students and other applicable individuals entitled nine sexual harassment employees and revised policies. 112 non-discrimination policy, 11. 112 non-discrimination policy, 112 rule discrimination complaint procedure, 112 exhibit complaint form, 411 equal educational opportunities, 411 rule, student discrimination complaint procedures, 411.1 harassment, bullying, hazing, 411.1 rule harassment, bullying, hazing, 511 equal opportunity employment, 511 rule employee discrimination complaint procedures, 513 harassment and revised K-12 student parent handbook as presented. Go call them.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Kropkowski?
Yes.
Motion carried. Announcements.
Okay. I have, let's see, included here in, in the announcements on your sheet, so you can access it from online. I want to thank Amy G. put together some K-5 highlights. I've never seen that here. All right, you can click on that on your computer. Okay, and, yeah, so she just wanted to highlight, shared some of the pictures of the students coming back to the schools. They've really done a great job. And I know last week was miserable with the rain. I know feedback we heard from elementary said they're really tired. It's just too much. They're always on because when you don't have recess, the teachers don't get any downtime. And with having lunch in their classroom, half the kids have lunch in their classroom. Again, that's on those weeks, they also don't have that downtime. So really they do just have that 30-minute duty-free lunch was their only downtime for the first week. So it's, it was, it was a long week there, but they did a really nice job at all the schools. The kids complying and doing their best with the different procedures and the social distancing. And I'm going through that with the kids. They did a lot of little videos. I know one of my kids, like, oh, all they did was, all they is, and they're being dramatic, you know, watch videos about COVID and what we're supposed to do, which we can't really wait a week to introduce you on that one slowly. We need to front off that and make sure you're ready to go. But I'll tell you what, it, it works. I went to Walmart and had my youngest there the other day. And we went to use the restroom and went to leave, and he was washing his hands like a medical surgeon. I was very impressed. And I mean, he was really doing a great job. I said, wow, did you learn that during, you know, school last week when they're going over the course? How they talk about that? But I've always washed my hands like this. Like, whatever. That's just, you'd have to know JJ. He always knows everything. But no, I was very impressed and saw personally the impact of that. But so I really want to thank them for all of their work. And the same carry throughout the middle school and the high school, they did a lot of great work there. I wanted to share with you, the, every two weeks, the county sends a update. And they've gotten it broken down by school district. What I'll say ahead of time though is the, the only piece that I think they still could tweak, but I need to leave alone is they, there's a sliver of the Burlington School District that's within Walworth County. Most of it's in received. So on this report, it's not really reflected, it doesn't count, it only counts the Walworth kids who are, who have tested positive for COVID, or the Walworth population, I shouldn't even say kids. But on this report, and they did send out even the data to clarify that we can share this with stakeholder groups. They just don't intend to be a large public publication. But this is what we've been working on them for some time. And they identified for us what level they feel we're at. We have a rubric that speaks to what potential instructional model we should use based on our level of infection. Critical being the only level where they would have the school district consider, you know, going to remote only. But this is a good example here because if you look at this chart, the only school district that's listed in critical with 51 cases per 10,000 is Whitewater. However, they also included in their memo that, you know, of those 104, you know, if 100 of them are from the university, for example, and it may not be 100, that has little to no impact on the K-12. So why would you flip to remote if all your cases are, are not having contact? So we do look closer at that. I would say if, you know, because I know people want to know, well, where's Elkhorn? We're at a 10.53 per 10,000, which you take Burlington out of that picture because that number's not reflective of it. We have the lowest rate per 10,000 with the exception of the two really tiny school districts that are at zero, which if I recall from the last one, one of them had four cases, which put them at the highest. Because when you only have, you know, 2,000 people in the school district area and one family gets it, it's going to be really volatile there too. So of the those with any significant population, we actually have the low, I was a little surprised. We have the lowest rate per 10,000.
It feels like the Lake Geneva one is a little skewed too, only because Lake Geneva's broken into two different school districts. You add those two together and they actually have a little bit higher.
Yeah, I think they, they overlap. So I do think they disaggregated those boundaries. So I understand what you're saying, but I, I don't know if they, because they're just looking at, okay, here's the unified high school boundary. And so some people will be counted twice, one for the K-8 and one for the unified high school.
Oh, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
But the previous reports were something when it was just done by ZipCo, there were people being counted five times because their ZipCo might touch five districts. So it was getting counted. So they did a really nice job breaking this down just by the district boundaries. So that's where we're at, the drop to low. We're almost at low. We're at 10.53, 0 to 9 per 10,000, they're considerable. You know, and that may be something that we look at and consider with a dance type situation. Do we have no active positive cases? And are we at low within our community? Then perhaps there's less, less. So here is the, oh, and here's our trend data. So this is why I feel pretty good about, you know, that trend. Even though school opened and we started dealing with some of this overall, I mean, our number of positive cases dropped almost in half from, prior to that school year's term. But even, yeah.
We're just seeing them now because they're in the building.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
So here's, and they also break it down for us by the age range. So 5 to 9, 0 right now, 10 to 14. The case rate is at 7.97 for 10,000. So we have about 36, you know, 100. They're listing that age range, we're at 1255. So, but you can see those case rates in the fluctuation. 15 to 19 is that highest case rate, which is that high school and just out of high school age. There, so we really, this is very helpful. It's been helpful for us in looking at that. So we'll continue to monitor that and I'll share that. Basically at every board meeting, we should have this. Now I want to check and see if September 28th, that noon worked for a policy committee meeting?
Yeah.
Yep, that should work.
All right, and then St. Patrick's renovation update. I know Bill or Paul, anything you'd like to share with the group relation, related to the renovation where we're at? And I have to go fill in the other ideas.
We've been meeting our, our kind of core committee with construction manager, C.D. Schmidt, and then with Henry Keough, about every three weeks, just to kind of talk about the progress on, on the project. As Keough and Henry are finishing up plan designs for different components, those are going immediately to C.D. Schmidt and then going out to bid. So we're, we're kind of fast tracking the project with the goal of having everything done by December. Still kind of our goal. At this point, they've started on the roof project. The gymnasium is actually done and they're going to be moving to the rest of the building. Mallory's been in for the last month doing all of the abatement work and also selected demolition. They're pretty much completed with that. So I think they're doing ear sampling and we get a chance to kind of see what that looks like. The components yet to be bid out are the electrical and the plumbing is being the two main. They're pretty large sections. One of the things from a dollars and cents standpoint, we're seeing is numbers are coming in very, very good. So I think our decision early on, and probably was being pushed a little bit from C.D. Schmidt of taking advantage of the market by really kind of moving this project and accelerating, I think has paid dividends for us because we're seeing prices coming in really good at this point. And I think in a couple of weeks, we'll have a better picture when everything comes in relatively electrical and plumbing. So overall project, I think we're, we're pretty much on schedule at this point. A couple of weeks behind because it took a little longer in getting the approval that proceed with the abatement work. But my guess is we'll be able to catch up. A little concerned with some lead items on certain components. It's just part of this COVID, you know, it's the action you get from different contractors on getting key component pieces. So that's always kind of a variable I think we're going to have to deal with. We've also talked about the idea, if the funding comes in and allows the possibility of even looking at even adding a couple of classrooms onto the building. Certainly that would be a school decision, but we're looking at the numbers. And part of the project, there's kind of the elementary section and the high school section, which would include maybe a little wall, some bathrooms to kind of separate that. Maybe if we could actually add a few classrooms and make that more of a high school addition, it might make some sense for the overall building. So it's an opportunity. I don't think we anticipated, but now we might have that opportunity. From the outside, looking at the building, I think the biggest change we see is kind of a front drive. And the city has approved that. So it'll be similar to like Jackson Elementary with a drop-off area. What else did I miss? Paul?
Uh, it seems about it. As long as the abatement, and then we get approval to go in and see where everything is so we can fast track as to putting people into place to destroy and rebuild as needed. And I think that's right around the corner too, isn't it?
Yes.
Yep.
So we'll know after the electrical, the plumbing numbers come in, whether or not from a budgetary standpoint, we'd have the resources to, you know, add the additional two classrooms or that space. Look at that. We would still look forward to getting the regular billing project updated as scheduled. But then those would be more like a springtime or, you know, after like conceiving, because it would be on the, the end of the building. But give needed space to that, that high school. Anything else, Paul?
No, and just on the, the finance on that, Bill can touch. If there is money available, we can either put it towards the project itself or it has to go off of the funding. Or how does that go, Bill?
It would, it would go to our debt service fund to pay them. Those are the two.
Those are the two options. So just keep that in mind as we move forward.
Okay, that's all I have. We do have a short close session this evening to review a staff request or individuals consideration of like work concern.
I move to adjourn to a close session for similar to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851C. To discuss the staff members' requests, the school board will not reconvene in open session.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So we moved a second to adjourn a close session for similar to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851C. To discuss the staff members' requests, school board will not reconvene in open session. Go call them please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martell?
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
And Ms. Kropkowski?
Yes.